Jimmy Sato there? Okay, the meeting will please come to order. This is a duly advertised meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of the city ordinance. In matters of this type, the decision of the board is final in respect that it does not go to the mayor of the city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you do have recourse in the court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory committee to the mayor and city council, make any recommendation either for or against it. Final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. The secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Darley? Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Ms. Nevadas? Ms. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
Hi, here. Any requests for variation?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one tabling request. It's petition 2015-33.
Thirty-three.
It's tabled by the petitioner.
A daycare center?
Yes, a daycare center. They need additional time to...
Need more children?
More planning, I guess.
It'll take a while. Okay, let's go to the regular agenda. Petition 2015...
Mr. Chairman, I think you'll need to entertain a motion to table and then take a vote.
Motion to second to table?
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Petition 2015-32. Charles Hastert?
Petition number 2015-32. The applicant is Russell Olson of Mackey Consultants. The owner of the property is M.I. Homes of Chicago. Location, 1008 Hudson Drive. Their request is for a variation of a required front yard setback from 30 feet to 28 feet to allow construction of a six-foot-by-18-foot covered front porch on a new home. The applicant plans to construct a six-foot-by-18-foot open porch addition on the front side of the home. The property includes a 2,000-plus-square-foot, two-story frame-and-stone residence currently under construction. Site-specific information, the lot measures 11,717 square feet. It is located in the Kearney-Glynn Unit 1 subdivision. The property is zoned R1B, and that's single-family residential zoning. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, to the north, south, and west is single-family residential land use, zoned R1B, and again, that's the single-family residential zoning. To the east is undeveloped and unincorporated Will County. Applicable regulations are as noted. There were no comments regarding this particular request at the Community Design Review Board meeting. General discussion, the proposed four-foot-by-four-foot front porch addition will extend out over the existing front porch slab. The open porch addition will provide needed weather protection for homeowners. The porch addition will generally conform to the style of the residence. The addition will be located 24 feet from the front property line, and the variance is required because it would encroach into the 30-foot front yard setback. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
My apology, I called off the wrong name. Is Mr. Olson here? Or Mr... or am I Holmes? Okay.
Good afternoon.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth, sir?
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Marty Burke. I'm president of Mackey Consultants. I'm here this afternoon with Russ Olson, who I work with. Chairman and board members, we appreciate your consideration in granting this variance of one foot for this condition that was just stated before you.
Any other comments you'd like to make, sir?
No, sir.
Any questions by the board?
I do have a question. The picture we saw up there was a home under construction, but this home is finished? Is that correct?
It's currently being constructed at this time.
Okay, so it's not done yet, okay.
Correct.
Any other comments? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Now, Mr. Hastert, you get to come forward if he's here. Petition 2015-34.
Petition number 2015-34. The applicant is Charles Hastert. Location, 1313 Dearborn Street. Mr. Hastert's request is for variation, requesting variations on the maximum allowed height of a detached garage from 20 feet to 28 feet, and to locate the garage not completely to the rear of the main dwelling in order to allow the continued construction of a one-and-a-half-story, 32-foot-by-40-foot detached garage. Under site-specific information, the property currently contains an existing two-story single-family home on three lots. The property does not currently include a garage, an existing gravel... I'm sorry, strike that last sentence. An existing gravel driveway is located along the side of the house, which will need to be paved as part of the new garage construction. The property is zoned R2, single-family residential. Surrounding zoning land use in character, to the north is residential R2, to the south is residential R2, as well as to the east and west. Applicable regulations are as noted. No comments regarding Mr. Hastert's request at the Community Design Review Board meeting. Under general discussion, approval of the requested size and setback variations will allow the petitioner to continue the construction of a new four-car detached garage. The petitioner began construction of the garage prior to submitting for a building permit. It was then discovered that the garage did not meet the required 60-foot front yard... I'm sorry, front setback, and that it was being constructed too high. The height variation is being requested because the petitioner would like a second-floor storage area. The new structure is required to use material and colors that will complement the siding and shingles on the existing frame house. Paving of the existing gravel driveway will be required as part of the new garage construction. The new detached garage cannot be converted into a single... into a separate dwelling space or office/business space. Conditions, the detached garage must be constructed with similar siding, asphalt singles, and colors to complement the material of the main residence. The existing gravel driveway must be paved as part of the garage building permit. And finally, the detached garage cannot be utilized for a separate dwelling space or commercial office space. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
How did this come to our attention?
I'm not sure. Typically, what happens is our building inspections division will notice if there isn't a permit posted in a window, and it could have been on one of their routine inspections that they came across this structure and didn't notice the permit, and then it comes to zoning.
Any complaints filed by neighbors or anybody?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth, sir?
Yes.
Name and address.
My name is Joseph Fisher. I reside at 508 Irving Street in Joliet. I am here on behalf of Mr. Hastert. Mr. Hastert has had a couple of heart surgeries in the last couple of months. I've been trying to take care of paperwork and bring in...
Are you the contractor on this, or...?
No.
Do you know why he started without a building permit?
As far as I know, Mr. Hastert did have a building permit back in September, October of last year, when the garage was first started, and then it got halted. I'm not exactly sure why.
So what happened? Did 180 days go by or something, or what, staff?
Well, typically, a permit is good for a year. They have a year to start the project, so I'm...
Jim, you got any comments?
I think there was just a misunderstanding that the contractor thought they had to go ahead from the building department and didn't formally submit for the permit.
So there's no deliberate attempt to defraud or anything here?
We don't think so, no. I think it was just miscommunication on what they needed to do.
All right, thank you. Any other comments you'd like to make, sir? Any questions by the board?
I do. Do you know what his plans are for access to that garage? I mean, you don't have any curb cuts in front of the garage doors, the double doors. The driveway will have to be paved, but what's going to be... I mean, how's he going to get to it? Is it going to be like a turnaround or something? I mean, I'm looking at this picture that I'm looking at, and I'm not sure that I...
Same one that I got here on the screen?
Yeah.
On the very right-hand side, that is a driveway, right there, and it does go straight up to that door.
You mean where that car is parked?
Yes, I think there's like a two-foot...
Is there a curb there, or does it angle in?
No, there's no curb there. There's already an existing driveway.
So from the driveway, he's going to have to make a right, kind of a swerve, to get into that. But what's going to be in front of that garage? You don't know. You don't know.
That's going to have to be paved.
That's a lot of paving. I mean, the whole thing probably wouldn't have to be paved, would it? That'd be a lot of concrete right there.
Is that part of the petition, that the front of the garage is going to be concrete or paved?
Yes, any driving surface or parking surface needs to be paved, and staff will work with Mr. Hastert.
How far from the garage out would that be paved?
We don't know. I don't have a site plan, but it would have to be... Oh, here we go.
This doesn't show the driveway, but they could potentially come in with a one-lane driveway since that's how wide their curb cut is. They could come in with one lane of paving and then fan out to...
Like an apron or something?
So you guys will stay on top of this to make sure this conforms?
We'll figure that out.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions by the board? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
I'll move for approval, and I'd like to add as one of the conditions, the public nuisance clause.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Hold the board.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you, sir. William Raspolich? Petition 2015-35.
Petition number 2015-35. The applicant is William Raspolich. He is the contractor. The owners of the property are Joe and Sandy Betis. Location, 807 Mason Avenue. Their request is for a variation of a front yard setback from 30 feet to 24 feet to allow a four-foot-by-four-foot covered front porch addition. The applicant plans to construct a four-foot-by-four-foot open porch addition on the front side of the home. The property includes a 2,128-square-foot, split-level, brick-and-frame residence built in 1939, and a detached two-and-a-half-car garage built in 1994. The site... I'm sorry, the lot comprises 6,566 square feet, located in the Cathedral area. The property is zoned R2, single-family. Surrounding zoning land use in character, to the north, south, and east is one- and two-family residential, zoned R3. To the west, a single-family residential, zoned R2. Applicable regulations are as noted. There were no comments regarding the Betis' request at the Community Design Review Board meeting. The proposed four-foot-by-four-foot front porch addition will extend out over the existing front porch slab. The open porch addition will provide needed weather protection for the homeowners. The porch addition will generally conform to the style of the petitioner's residence. The addition will be located 24 feet from the front property line. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth, sir?
Yes.
Name and address.
William Raspolich, 1406 Taylor Street, Joliet, Illinois.
Comments?
For one, the porch is not... It comes out from the house four-foot, but it's actually nine-foot wide, which I think the drawing you just had shown before that, which I put in, is four-foot by nine-foot. And it's what it does, it basically extends the existing roof line we're following and just bringing that out to provide cover for... We want to put a new front door in the house that matches the original, but the company that's going to make it for us will not warranty the door unless it has at least a minimum of a 40-inch extension...
Overhang?
...overhang.
That your comments? Any questions by the board? No one cares about the four-inch overhang. Wonderful. Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? We have a very friendly crowd today. Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you. Elias Perez. Petition 2015-36.
Petition number 2015-36. The applicant and owner is Elias Perez. The location, 512 Elwood Avenue. Mr. Perez's request is for a variation of a required front yard setback. The request... The petitioner is requesting a variation of a required front yard setback from 30 feet to 13.3 feet in order to construct a five-foot-by-22-foot front porch. The 6,600-square-foot lot currently contains a single-family home with a detached garage. The house currently includes a small covered porch that is approximately three feet by four feet. The current non-conforming front yard setback to the house is 18... A little over 18 feet. The property is zoned R2, single-family residential. Surrounding zoning land use in character, the property is surrounded on all sides by single-family homes that all have the R2 zoning. Applicable regulations are as noted. There were no comments regarding this request at the Community Design Review Board meeting. The requested variation will allow the owner to construct a five-foot-by-22.7-foot covered front porch within the front yard setback area on the property. The existing home currently maintains an 18.32-foot setback to its front face elevation. Conditions, that the porch is constructed with complementary materials and colors to match the existing home, and that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth, sir?
Yes.
Do I have your name and address?
My name is Pagan Perez, and I'm here representing Elias Perez, his my dad, and we reside at 512 Elwood Avenue, Joliet, Illinois.
What is the purpose of wanting the porch?
Well, before...
Is that going to be enclosed at all? Is it going to be open?
Open.
Open?
It's going to have a roof on the top. Because before, in front of the house, there was like some trees that provided shades and stuff, and a few months ago, they chopped them all down, and now it's like all open, and we would like it to, like, just to...
Okay. Any comments by the board?
Going to lose all that pretty landscaping, it looks like. I'm just looking at the landscaping in front of the windows. It's going to go underneath across the front.
You don't approve of the bushes?
No, I like the bushes. I'm just saying they're going to lose some.
Any other comments by the board? Anyone who doesn't like the bushes? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Boy, I'm telling you, we're rolling right along here. Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the roll.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Seeing as Ms. Powell likes the bushes, I will a vote aye. Thank you.
From the looks of the landscaping there, I got a hunch those bushes will be replaced.
That's what I mean. I like the bushes.
Pretty good-looking. They'll be transplanted.
They'll be moved, yeah.
Oh, maybe some medical marijuana. Okay, old business, revocation of petition 201306. Is the petitioner present? No one's here. They must be down at the river looking at the wharf.
Maybe they're at the Black Hawks. Maybe they're at the Black Hawks.
Yeah. Want to read the petition?
Petition number 2013-06, repeal. Applicant, City of Joliet. Petitioner, Herberto Gonzalez Ruiz. Owner, Luanne Kenny. Location, 101 North Center. The request is for a repeal of a special use permit to allow a used car lot for up to 10 cars. The board tabled the petition at the May 2015 meeting to allow additional time for the petitioner to comply with the conditions of approval of the special use permit. The property was declared a public nuisance at an administrative hearing held in April of this year. The tenant was found to be noncompliant with the required conditions of approval of the special use permit that was granted by the city council in December of 2014. Accordingly, the administration scheduled the repeal of the special use permit at the May 2015 board meeting. Let's see here. Under background, the conditions of approval include, but are not limited to, the conditions that the number of vehicles for sale not exceed 10 at any time, and that site improvements conform to the submitted landscape plan. The required perennial landscaping has been added to the planters at the site. The original ordinance granting the special use permit and meeting minutes are provided. At the present time, Car Credit Incorporated routinely has 13 vehicles on display. Should the petitioner wish to increase the number of allowed vehicles for sale at the site, a new special use permit accompanied by a site plan labeling the proposed parking and driveway areas would need to be required. And that concludes the report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have anything new in the form of evidence of any kind? Has this changed since the last meeting?
We do have some pictures, and I think... I believe these were taken today. How many cars did we count today? There were 13 cars today.
How many of those were for sale, and how many were customers' cars? Because our variance allows for 10 cars for sale, so if there's salesman's cars, or the owner's cars, or customer's cars, it makes a difference.
The sales... The for-sale cars have to have the for-sale sticker in it, so that...
It looked like there were 12 for sale.
12 for sale?
Has that been consistent, or is that... You know, I mean, are there moving cars at that occasion or time, or...
Yeah, it's... I think we have counted more than 10 cars there since they came before you last month, and I have at least one complaint that states that there were as many as 15 cars there.
Where are these complaints coming from?
Just the general public.
Okay. Now, we granted, I believe, he's going to rent that space in the old Borden Building that belongs to Luanne Kenny, or storage of additional cars so that he could... Wouldn't overburden the for-sale lot. Is he doing that, or...
That was an option that was presented to the tenant by staff, that they would take their overflow, anything above 10, and park them inside the other building.
That was the idea. Is he doing that?
I don't know. We're only counting what's on the lot here. We're only monitoring that. I don't know if there's overflow in that other lot or not, in the other building or not.
And that building was to be used, what, just for storage of cars?
Well, actually, that building received a special use permit for detail, detailing of vehicles, and there was additional space in that building for overflow from this lot, where they could handle the overflow vehicles from this lot as well as do their detailing business.
Store cars there for customers to look at, it's like...
Correct. Yeah, they could take pictures of the vehicles, put them in their sales building, and bring them over if a customer saw something they liked. And that way, they could keep this lot relatively open and still have a number of vehicles for sale.
But we don't... Do we have any actual photographs of where they were overstocked?
These were the photos that were taken today, and we counted 13 cars on the lot.
Go back to that other one. Is that Jefferson Street exit blocked?
Yes, that's... I think over the past several days, that's been consistently blocked.
Is that supposed to be left open, isn't it, for safety? Right here on the left corner of that picture, there's a cut in the curb for an exit. Is that supposed to be open, or is that... Doesn't that make any difference?
Jim, could you go back to that one picture? Yeah, the staff would have preferred if this stayed open because it allows additional exit for customers coming out of there.
Would that limit the amount of cars you could... The 10 cars you could park? If you take that space away, or two spaces?
When they took those two spaces away, I think initially, they were still able to get at least 10 cars for sale on the lot.
You can still get the 10 for sale on there.
And you counted 12 this morning, Barb?
Well, we gave them 30 days additional to comply with the conditions that were laid out by staff and by the board. If we have evidence that they're not complying, I don't know if that one photograph is evidence I go by there several times a week, and I've counted times when there was excess, and some times where there were less than 10. But I don't really know if they're moving cars, or if some of those cars are customers' cars or what. I'm not sitting there counting them.
Well, you would know the cars for sale, though, by the signs in the window.
Yeah, if they've got them on there, I don't know.
That's a requirement, correct? That's one of the conditions, the original conditions, that they have to put the sign in the window.
I realize that. I just wish we had more supportive... You know, there's no way to look at these pictures to tell if there's what's what.
Can I make a motion? Are you ready for that?
Yeah, questions first on the board. Comments?
First of all, there was a piece in the paper today about the dock being washed away.
Luanne's Kenny housed on the river, yeah.
Perhaps that's why Luanne's not here. And I would certainly like to hear from her, since she's the one we... I based my vote last month on the veracity of Luanne's comments, that she would take care of this, and it would be taken care of.
Is this the petitioner?
I'd like to give her an opportunity to be here to speak on the...
Is this the petitioner?
I don't know.
Are you the petitioner on this?
Perman. I'm just got here. Sorry.
This is Mr. Ruiz. He's the... He's leasing the property.
This is the petitioner. So he's the petitioner, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, we're going over the fact that there have been complaints that you've had too many cars on the lot.
I got only 10 cars right now, so...
Right now, but what about...
I mean, during the time you give us, like 30 days, I think, so we removed all the cars.
It's been 30 days.
And now we're down to 10. And he's down to 10.
Well, Barb was there this morning. She said there were 12.
Does a car that you drive have sale signs in it, too?
No, it doesn't. It is the one that you show in the picture, that one in the corner.
This one, yeah, that one, I think.
See, here's my quandary. We don't really have any... You know, we've got comments that there were so many cars, and so...
We have an eyewitness.
Yeah, and he says that there's only... I don't know what they were. I'm not...
Maybe we need a field trip. Maybe we need to take a field trip.
Yeah. So I'm asking for comments from the board now. If anybody's got any opinions, let's hear them.
I think I gave my opinion.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair is closing the petition to the floor and asking the board for discussion and a motion.
I would like to extend the petition for 30 days to give Luanne an opportunity to be here to speak on her behalf, and for the staff to do a complete report of signs with for-sale signs in them, and to present that back to us at the next meeting.
I have one question for the petition before we continue. Mr. Ruiz, do you have a place to put these extra cars that won't overcrowd your lot?
Yeah, Luanne.
You found a place. If Barb Newberg counted 12 cars, and now there's 10, you've moved those two cars some to another location.
Oh, yeah, I can do it, but I mean, would I have to park my car when I'm driving home to work?
Well, your personal car doesn't count, as far as I'm concerned. That's a --
Yeah, that's the one right there.
Yeah, that's the blue one. I'm looking at it.
If you count all the cars, like, 10 cars.
If you have a place to put the overflow cars, that's what we're asking about.
I mean, I can tell, I mean, I can tell the Wendy's, they can give you permission to park one car across the street.
Where is the other place?
I mean, I know, but I mean, I have to take a place to park my car and my other employee, so.
I'm not worried about your cars and the employees. I'm worried about the overflow on the lot that's causing you to get in trouble here.
Oh, it's not a problem. I can remove, but now I have only 10 cars.
And where is this place you put these cars, the extra cars? Where would you put them?
No, we can park in the other building that Luanne Kenny has on the --
Right, the other building is the board.
Around the corner.
The one we talked about?
Yeah.
What about the cars that are parked blocking the -- like, this van, is this van here for sale?
I can see it.
I don't see a sign, but it looks like it's kind of blocking the driveway there.
Maybe there's a customer going out.
You know what? I think we, as board members, should take it upon ourselves that every time we pass there, we should count it ourselves.
I'd look over there, but.
I mean, actually, really count at random times. We all go by there at different times.
Well, a motion of some kind would be in order.
And I was second, and he made the motion already.
I did to extend it for 30 days.
We have a motion on the floor in a second to table the petition to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Can I ask a question first, though?
Sure.
If we table it, where does that leave Mr. Ruiz as business owner? I mean, he's allowed to conduct business still at that point. Okay.
Yeah, with 10 cars, though.
With 10 cars.
Okay.
10.
10.
For 10 for-sale cars.
10 for sale.
10 for sale.
No problem.
A motion is second to table. Call the roll.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
I'm going to go with the majority, but this has been going on for, what, two or three, four months now, and back to February, I think. And, you know, we always end up at the same spot, and nobody seems to know how many cars are there. We have evidence that there's too many, and then we don't really have any, you know. I hope this is the last tabling motion. Motion is passed, so.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the condition --
This is for 30 more days.
I think the condition of the 30-day extension was to also have staff provide a written report.
Yes, that's what part of the petition here.
Yeah, so we will follow up.
And we want some photographic evidence, you know, if there's too many cars in there. We want some evidence showing that.
Okay.
As you said, you've had complaints from the public. Well, that, you know, that's not really evidence. That's just hearsay.
If they're not here. If they were here, it would be different.
So, you know, we got people complaining, and I want them here so we can verify that, you know, where it's coming from. Otherwise, it's just hearsay, and it's not evidence.
But we do have a witness. I mean, we do have Barb there.
Well, yes. We also have a tabling motion. We all voted for it, so.
Yes, we did. We did.
Okay, you're in business for 30 more days. You better clean up your act.
Okay.
A motion would be in order to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.